Yeah, for two minutes together. Start from that closing session here, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, I mean, especially just like, you know, the same kind of acid. Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. I'd like to welcome everybody to, uh, the December 2nd, 2024 City Council's Work Session. Would ask that everyone please silence all electronic devices. We'll move right into our agenda this evening. Item A, Is FLYA 2023-2024 Audit Report. Chris Temple represents our Chief and National Officer, Peter Reese.
Thank you, Council, for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm pleased to introduce Patricia Rhodes, who is partner at South Stewart McGowan and King. We also have Tommy Tom McGowan, who is also a partner and generally first. So I'm going to turn it over to Patricia.
Thank you, Patricia. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council, uh, for allowing us to be with you to discuss the audit report for June 30th, 2024. We're here reporting to you tonight because as auditors, we work for the council. Uh, we work with the city staff on the audit. Uh, this report was submitted to the local government commission for their review, uh, which is required by all governmental units every year. Uh, this report was prepared in the prescribed format of the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. Uh, the summary financial information, uh, is in the front of the report, and as you continue through the report, uh, the information gets more detailed. Um, annual comprehensive financial report, or ACTFOR, uh, for June 30th, 2024, was prepared by the City of Burlington Finance Staff. The sections of the financial report that are actually prepared by South Stewart McGowan and King are the Audit Opinion Letter on Roman numeral page 12, and in the Compliance Section, uh, Report on Internal Control Over Financial Reporting on page 167, the Report on Compliance for Each Major Federal Program on page 169, and the Report on Compliance for Each Major State Program on page 172. On Roman numeral page nine, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting was received for the year ending June 30th, 2023, marking the 25th consecutive year the award has been received by the city, which is a great accomplishment, especially due to all the constant changes that are being required in reporting. As stated in the opinion letter on Roman numeral page 12, the statements are the responsibility of management. Uh, they are responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Our responsibility as auditors is to express an opinion on the financial statements based on our audit, which is conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. The opinion that we are rendering on the financial statements is an unmodified opinion, which is the best and cleanest opinion that can be received. The management's discussing discussion and analysis, starting on Roman numeral page 15, is an excellent overall summary of a very expansive and detailed report. It contains financial highlights, financial analysis, and economic factors, and budget highlights for 2025. Uh, there is one new schedule that appears in this year's report that was not in last year's report. Uh, it's the Special Revenue Schedule of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the construction training program. They can be found on page 100. The city, the city still has many projects, uh, for general and water and sewer, uh, from the prior year that remain open and will continue to have activity in this current fiscal year. In looking at the operations of the city, there are many fixed and variable costs to consider, especially in the water and sewer fund, there are fixed costs that are incurred regardless of the number of gallons that flow to the businesses and residents. One important operating cost that is not a cash expenditure for the city but is an important financial tool is depreciation expense. It plays a vital role in planning for future capital expenditures as the city estimates timing and cost and capital asset replacement and upgrade. The overall citywide tax collection rate for the 2023 taxes was 99.43%, which is an excellent collection rate. The city maintained a Geo Bond rating with Moody's at 8.8. Uh, in the compliance section in the back of the report on pages 177 to 179, there is a list of grant monies, uh, that were received during the year for federal and state agreements. For this past year and the coming years, the grant money received will continue due to funds coming from federal, state, and local sources, um, tied to the American Rescue Plan Act money. Uh, we do consider internal, internal control as part of our audit, but we do not express an opinion on internal control. We consider it in determining appropriate audit procedures as part of our consideration of internal control. Nothing came to our attention that we are required to report to you as a material weakness or a significant deficiency. Um, uh, there, uh, if we did have something to report to you, uh, we would have reported it, um, in a separate letter. Uh, but I think you did receive a separate three-page letter that is a required communication, uh, from us to the council as part of our professional standards. And just to summarize what's in the letter, uh, we, we do disclose that we've had no, uh, that we have not encountered any difficulties with management and performing our audit, nor did we have any disagreements with management over any accounting, reporting, or auditing matters. Uh, we continue to work with finance staff on the implementation of any new Governmental Accounting Standards Board statements issued and any effects those would have on future financial reporting of the City of Burlington. Uh, does anyone have any questions for me?
Good news.
You just want to read a chapter out of it.
Yeah, I tell you what, he, little night reading for you here.
Yes, this is the Laker of Love, that's for sure.
Yes.
Certainly. Speaking for years back, we appreciate y'all's service. Uh, the audit business for municipal audits or any government audits now has changed enormously in terms of, uh, form, speaking, and reducing essentially, I must say. Um, it's almost competitive, you know, totally different small things, getting all the burden and retaining all of it.
Right.
So it's, uh, it's an interesting process. It goes back to the LGC in terms of town sometimes being late when the audits. Reality may be is it could be a combination of the towns problem, but also it could be a combination of the audit itself, which we see now some of those overlooked lines. So thank you, guys, for your job. We really appreciate how good you are.
But we, we appreciate it. I, I just want to thank Craig, Peggy, and all the city staff for all your, uh, assistance in the, in the, in us trying to complete the audit. And, um, but we also thank you, Council, for allowing us to be in Pennerville, for them. Uh, we're local, and anytime you have any questions, please, please reach out.
Well, we're most appreciative of that. And obviously, we've got the information. There's a lot to dissect from this information. But I think it's, uh, safe to say if you've got any questions, just call Craig. Don't call me.
That's right.
Get out, Craig.
But, um, thank you so much, and, uh, we really appreciate you guys.
Thank you very much.
Our next item, item B, is housing study. Uh, at this time, we'll recognize our Executive Director of Planning and Development Services, Jamie Olson.
And I'm going to go ahead and recognize, um, our consultants, uh, who are here, um, Cindy, Angie, and Andy Scott. They have a short presentation.
Hello.
Welcome.
Evening.
Those will probably stay on the lawn part.
So I do have a short presentation. Thank you very much for having us. We are doing the, um, housing study, and we want to give a progress report, um, to kind of show where we are and some initial, um, findings. So, um, just to kind of talk a little bit about how we went through this, uh, we are going through the study, kind of have the three phases. And, uh, the first part was really kind of, uh, getting the scope, looking at the market study, your population growth, demographics, uh, income, uh, and then a little bit on the employment, um, growth, wages, commuting trends, those who are coming into the collective work and those who might be leaving, and then looking at the housing stock. So the housing units, occupancy, availability, et cetera. So from that, we really, um, go into the analysis. And we've done most of our, uh, phase one, and having, we're kind of in the analysis, looking at the different areas. For instance, you know, what are the population and income trends that will form what your housing needs, uh, are now and could be? And what are the economic dynamics that will spur more growth? So in looking at that, we, um, would come up with, are in the process of getting housing needs model. Uh, so we're looking at the housing values and availability and compare that to income levels and how many households are, um, distributed in those different income levels. We'll also evaluate based on affordability limits. So looking at each, uh, section and being able to say, this is the, the type or type of housing that each would be able to afford. And the final report, we would be looking at the current housing stock, presenting that, and the characteristics, the housing needs model, summarize how trends may affect housing, and the summary of affordable housing thresholds. And that final report is, uh, going to be delivered in February. So just for a few key highlights, I wanted to look at the, um, distribution, uh, with age groups. We have, um, the first two columns are, um, the population as it is now, and then we're looking at change and also the change in share. So you'll see the biggest group, uh, percentage-wise, is your 10 to 19-year-olds. Uh, that's grown about 1.8% in the last five years. The next group, the 20 to 29-year-olds in the last five years, that's declined. Um, and the 70 to 79-year-old group has increased as well. And so when you look at the demographics, you're going to understand a little bit about the types of housing needs that might be involved. We're also looking at population growth of Burlington. I'm sure it's, it goes quite well. It is growing, uh, above the pace in Alamance County over the last, uh, five years especially, uh, but ahead of North Carolina and ahead of the U.S. overall. And looking at the commuting patterns, um, for those who are driving into the area for the employment centers that are here, there are about 28,500 people that come into the city to work, and that is about 82% of the employment base within the city limits. Driving out is about 17,800 and about 6,200 that are working within the city limits. That's a net inflow of about 10,700, which is pretty good. If you are in an employment center, you're bringing people in, uh, to the area. So then when we look at where the commuters live, we can see it's distributed among, uh, in the region, Guilford County, of course, being the biggest group. And of course, part of the city does go into Guilford County. Um, so that's kind of the strongest, uh, neighboring counties there have the strongest pull. And when we look elsewhere in Alamance County, uh, of course, Graham being the closest with about 1,500 people driving into Burlington for work. And this is, uh, 2022 data, which is the latest available, uh, for this type of information. So then we look a little bit about the, uh, housing stock. There are 23,800 occupied housing units according to the census, and that's a 2022 number again. The, uh, divide is about 45% renter occupied, 56% owner occupied. The rental vacancy rate is about 5.5%. The homeowner vacancy rate is 0.9%, so fairly low. When we look at the Burlington, the housing values, and this is census information 2022, you can see that there is, um, a lot of housing stock in the mid-range from your, um, 100,000 and to 150, and then 200 to 300,000 have about the largest percentages. And if you compare that to Alamance County here, um, there's a lot of, um, more levels, uh, across the board of housing values. Now, this may not be the sales price. This may not be the tax value, but this is the reported, um, value that the census, uh, reports. We have, uh, from comparing, uh, five years, there's 7.2% more housing units, um, 2% more are units are occupied, and, uh, 4% more are owner occupied. So the average household size has decreased, and, oops, I think my arrows got flipped over there. Apologies on that. Um, and the vacancy rates have, um, increased slightly. So this, um, there's a lot on this slide, and I understand and I don't expect, uh, this is kind of a preliminary finding. And what we, uh, are trying to do is really look at the sections of income and what can be afforded. So at the top, you're going to see your income levels, and at the very top, you see a percentages. And what we're using is the HUD-defined, uh, area, um, median income. And that's a family income of four, and that's the 77,900. And we take a percentage off of that to really define what these different groups are, and take a look at how that translates into the different housing groups, how many households there are. And if you can see the width of each of these, uh, rectangles, kind of shows relatively how big that group is, what the current housing stock is value-wise, and this is from the GIS property tax value. We're also looking at things that are proposed, developments. Uh, Burlington is very fortunate in that there's a lot in the pipeline for development, uh, both multifamily and single-family homes. Multifamily units, there are, um, 7,300 roughly existing units, uh, which includes both subsidized and market rate, and about 22,500, uh, units that are approved or are in the moving process. Uh, so again, that pipeline is, uh, fairly good. The availability of homes, we're looking at the homes that are listed for sale and the rentals advertised. And as you can see, there's a lot in the middle, not a lot, uh, towards the lower end. Now, we still have, um, other details to mention and kind of fold in, uh, to get the, uh, total picture for this, to take a look at what is actually available. This is, uh, homes that are listed for sale that are advertised, and these are rentals that are advertised. This doesn't take into consideration programs and other things that are there, which will be folded in. Um, but these are some preliminary findings, and, uh, just wanted to share that with, um, the council as we keep moving forward to digest and assess and put this report together. Um, and Andy, did you have any comments?
Well, in the next phase, we'll also bring you numbers where we, we'll show you census tract by census tract, more detailed information about what the average family by census tract can afford and what the average housing value in that census tract might be. In two particular areas, one in the northeast and one in the southwest, we're going to look more at the census block level to give you some idea of, in more detail, uh, just kind of anecdotal as to where your markets are going. We use a market, uh, model that takes into account on the ownership level of Fannie, Freddie, and FHA, and what their requirements are to give you an idea of what the average person can buy in the real market. And we also look at a similar model about for rental. Look, we, we hope a lot to chew on.
So the February report will have specific, um, data for, um, owner occupied and rental separately?
Yes. So, uh, to where we can find that information, there's some things that, particularly if we're looking at the GIS data and those housing values, there's not a way to really divide those out to rental or owner, but as much as possible, um, kind of really get, uh, some details on, you know, some demographics of the owner, rental, and then geographically a little bit more focused. Any other questions?
Any questions from council at this point? Craig, everything?
We're very excited. We, we appreciate the work. We appreciate the work our staff has done as well, getting us to this point. Uh, again, we're trying to define what affordable housing means for Burlington. And, uh, there's a lot of work to do to it, but this will give us that overall definition of what it means to us.
Yeah, and a, and a quick comment to that, there's not really, other than those that are subsidized and things that have federal programs, there's not really official names. And so as we're going through and putting some names on it, we're working with, you know, city staff to really kind of determine what those mean and how that would, um, fit into the city's, uh, view of housing.
And I think that's an important piece, because if you ask 10 people to define affordable housing, you get 10 different definitions. But, you know, factual information to make decisions on this exactly.
Along the line of affordable housing is what an individual family or person can accomplish on the market. And so it's subject to a lot of complexity. So what we're trying to do is really give you kind of a snapshot of what it looks like.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you guys being with us.
I want to thank your planning department and your GIS departments for absolutely excellent work they've done to help us.
Our next item, item C, is poverty quarters grant program updates. At this time, we'll recognize Michael Latell, our Business Retention and Expansion Director. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you, sir?
Good.
Thank you for the opportunity to present. Uh, wanted to come back to you and present an update on the prior quarters grant we presented back in March. We wrapped up the end of last year, and we're kind of rolling into this year, but we did some changes. So wanted to bring up the opportunities we've come up with, um, to make that happen. Sorry. Maybe she has something else. It's not there. Can you stop that? Do what?
The desktop?
It was.
Yeah, go to desktop at the top. Here in my, one of the folders.
Sorry about the G. Anyway, just wanted to kind of bring you up to speed on it. As a reminder, it's a program we launched in 2023, um, with funds provided by the Economic Development Fund, the Abbott City Council. And we have $300,000 a year that we would put towards renovations, modifications, and more improvements of buildings within the three quarters, and that being North Church Street, Wade Avenue, uh, I'm sorry, Webb Avenue, and Midland Avenue. Um, so we have the quarters here. It's encouraged, um, buildings to be renovated, modified, improved for tax purposes, as well as to protect the longevity of buildings, make sure they're going to be there, sustainable, and have an opportunity for the city to continue with those buildings in those quarters. Um, the grant is a one-to-one matching fund program, so up to $30,000. If they put in $30,000, we match that. Uh, we've had good success with that. Most of the, the grants we have provided have been at the maximum level of that. There is an internal and an external aspect of that. They can be used together or they can be used separately. And I bring that out because we have one of them who's coming up on us who is looking at about a quarter of a million dollars worth of renovation of a building, and we can split that between internal and external, and they're going to be able to gain maximum benefit from that. So they'll be able to gain close to $60,000 as an opportunity for their building. Um, and it's actually 707 East Webb. So it's a building that, if you go by it, definitely needs some work, and it would be a very good benefit and a big win for us to get them to do that. Um, the marketing plan we started with last year is we came out and we, we put it on social media, which is the good and easy answer. Um, everybody likes to be on social media, but at the same time, we did direct now post cars at everybody in each one of the quarters, as well as we did presentations at three different locations. The first one was out at the Dream Center. The second one was here in City Hall. The third one was down at the Rec Center off of Webb Avenue or kind of back behind Webb Avenue. And, um, we had mixed success with that. So this year, as we went into the program, we looked at it, and we said, what changes can we make? What can we do differently? And we came up with a little plan. Um, first of all, we updated our, the pages on our website. So we have new information. We have new links. We have new opportunities for those. But at the same time, we continued the social media because that's not going away. That's still the avenue. But we put out signs along the quarters. And the first set of signs we put out are literally just promotion of the program, and they have a, a scan code that you can scan. It'll take you to our website, so they would see that. But then we actually stepped back and we put signage that was actually set up for specifically the people that we have participated with in the, in the buildings, so the people would start seeing those. Because the old Pizza Hut restaurant out on North Church Street, they actually were a recipient of the grant, and it has made a difference. It looks a lot better. We've had opportunities with that. We've also had a couple of them closer to We've also had a couple of them closer into town. So we're starting to get that. And there's one building that they actually bought who's next to, on Webb Avenue, a childcare facility, and they're going to actually upgrade that facility to make it an additional space for that childcare facility. And it was a rundown house. Looked bad, it wasn't really what we wanted in terms of a primary quarter coming into town, and they have done some good work to that. That is the one that's still kind of in works, and we'll see that coming around. It just takes longer because of the approval process and the administrative process that we have to go through as a city to get it done. But the one you have here on the left side, closest to me, is actually a link on our website, so that if they click on it, it takes them to a quick one-page informational bulletin on it. We still have all of our details, all of our, you know, regulatory-approved pieces that go with what the grant is, but this is kind of a quick high level, so they can see and understand what it is. The second one you have over here is one of the yard signs that we actually have out for people who have participated in the program, and they can actually look at that and say, hey, the city has gone out and done this. Look at the building itself, they've made a big difference. And you can see that in the pictures, because you have your quarters here. We added on to it, but this is the difference we've made. You look at the windows that have been put into this building. This building was basically rundown on the far right side. They had, if you walk through it, you could literally walk through it without having to open the doors. It was just that rundown, and they've made a good difference, and they're going in the right direction. The Pizza Hut, as we all recognize here, it was all frosted over. It was in a lot of challenge. They've redone the internal kitchen, they put in a grease trap, they've made it a restaurant, and they're relocating a business out of Hall River into Burlington, which is an opportunity for us to have a victory, with buildings relocated and being regenerated back into use in our city. And the last one is Dynamic Electric, which was right down here off of North Church Street, crossing the auto shop, literally in 300 block of North Church Street. And they repainted the parking lot. Each side of that building is white. They came back and wanted to do another one. They're one of the candidates that we have approved for the second round. They're going to repaint the entire building. So it's really going to pick up the hook in the opportunity that building gives us for improving our quarters. Year-to-date results for this year. We have three applicants, two of which are approved. The last one, Joel Silverstein, he lives out of the Chapel Hill area, but he's a realtor developing 707 Webb Avenue. And he wants to put in windows on the outside. He's got interior work that needs to be done. It's about a 13,000 square foot building, but they're trying to get back into reuse. Originally was a, kind of like a thrift or a Goodwill sort of spouse shop where they get business out of the side of it and weren't really focused on it. They finally moved out, and he started moving to make improvements so we can get it back into real use that we can do something with. Because you could put a manufacturing operation in there or something of that nature, that would make a difference for us. The other one is a business that originally did some roof work on the outside of the building, and that's the crawl space supply company. It's also bioclean, and it's the great building down on Webb Avenue. But they put a roof on it. Now they're going to go back in and put all the stuff inside of it to kind of regenerate that building to make sure that roof stays and is sustainable for a long period of time. As we look forward, we're going to continue to look for opportunities to advertise, because that's the biggest way we're going to get this word out there, is people understand that we have this opportunity. We want them to take advantage of it. We have, like I said, $300,000 right now. We have approval for close to $90,000 of that. So there's, you know, clearly room there, $210,000 that we could definitely do some other things with. So we're going to look at those. We're going to improve our online messaging to help drive that piece. We're also doing a lot of going out of meetings specifically with businesses to help them understand what we can do for them, and not just this, but other opportunities that we have that support them. Small business, as well as the technical center of the LGC. All the tools that you can help grow a smaller business who needs those resources. And then the last one is we're going to, you know, continue to post program details on, you know, local corridor billboards, whatever avenues we can. We work at the Dream Center a lot, trying to reach out to the different parts of the community and the different aspects that we can get into. And they're willing to put us on the bulletin boards, and those are all pieces that we can get a lot of traction with that don't take a lot of effort, other than printing it off and taking it to them. So that's a level of what it is. If you have questions, I'll be glad to answer them. But once again, I appreciate the opportunity.
How, quick rundown of how the approval process looks like. They fill out an application?
We have four application periods throughout the year. August, November, Jan, or February, or January and March. And we go through the review process internally, and we evaluate it on criteria that we set, which is, you know, is it improvement of the building? Is this maintenance? Is this just general taking care of something you should or shouldn't take care of yourself? So we have a criteria for that, and we have a party of seven people who actually review that. Once they're reviewed it, they all put their confidence in it, and we take that from there, and we're able to go forward with that. And we have a minimum score that we want to see to make sure it actually works for us as an opportunity to improve the community.
Quick question there.
Yes.
That program, owners and tenants can apply, right?
They, if you own the building, there's no question. If you're a business and you're a tenant who takes up a space in there, you have to have a sign-off from the actual building owner. So we can't manipulate somebody else's building without them being aware of it. But up to now, we've not run into anybody who's had objections to it.
Okay, both the application, you received our owners then?
Most of them are, have been owners. One of them has been actually a business within a building, and the owner was very happy to sign off on it and improve their building.
I figured it would. If you improve their building, they wouldn't like that option.
And a tenant's actually putting the money in to improve their building, so they're paying half of it, they're paying the other half, and it really is a win-win for the business or the building owner.
It is, I agree.
And is there a limit on how many times each business can apply?
If you apply within a year, you can get it once. If nobody else has applied and there are funds left at the end of the year, we'd rather use those funds, and that's when we'll go back to those businesses and talk to them and say, hey, are you still interested in doing this? So the answer to your question is yes, there is, once.
Per year.
But if the funds are still available, rather than be used, then have not been used. So we go back to the businesses and give them a second chance.
Thank you. Can you answer that, Parker's review? Is the chamber helping in in all of this, or?
Actually, yes, I work heavily with Stephanie Williams on that side of it, because she is actually a small business and entrepreneur. So she's dealing with a lot of the same people, and she's promoting it, but she sends them back to us. Similar programs that they do, where if they have a grant program, we'll tell people about it, but we send them to her for administration.
Any other questions? Thank you.
No, I appreciate the opportunity.
Item D, is our dual bond project status updated? This time we'll turn the page to Craig.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. Just wanted to kind of give you an update of where we were at now that the vote has occurred back in November 5th, and the vote's been certified, and our projects, vote questions were approved. It is now really the work gets started, and we need to move forward. So we want to kind of give you an update on timeframes and where we're at and next steps. Again, the recreation and parks bottom question passed with 50.52% of the vote, and the streets and sidewalks passed with 57.42% of the vote. And again, just to reiterate the Paramount projects that were all the questions, is the Paramount Theater expansion, the MAC, which is currently underway now, that we'll talk about. And then also the sportsplex that we need to start playing for and moving for as far as getting input, as far as location and programming of those type things. Again, the street, the sidewalk bottom projects, we're now working on the matrix with our contractor. Bob said that we had the contract signed today.
Last week.
Last week, that will come through and evaluate all of our city streets to make sure we grade them correctly. And again, as we stated all along, we're going worst to first. So we'll start with the worst streets that we have in our community. We should get that report back in about six weeks, and then we will go from there with respect to getting, hopefully, a list. We should be able to bid that out and hopefully award mid-February.
Bid out in February, right, award in August?
Yeah.
How are we doing that?
It's a company called Good Roads. They did our last evaluation, and so they'll be updating the current assessments.
When we release the contract, just for clarity, there will be the street piece that's bond-related, but we'll still have some internal budgetary work that we'll still need.
Right, very much so.
Very much so. Try to get your house stopped here.
But again, the sidewalk condition evaluation is complete, so we're ready to move on that. With respect to downtown streetscape, we're still in schematic design with respect to that. So again, that's $5 million. We will put some local dollars to it as well. There's going to be some larger tour dollars to it. So we're working on schematics, getting that back, and seeing actually what the cost and budget shall be on those. But that's moving forward. And again, just an update, we're working on the downtown utility work. Bid should be in about the 12th of this month. We had to rebid that because we've received one bid, so we had to go back to them 30 days and try to get additional interest in the project. But we're hopefully, we'll begin watering for a project first quarter of next year. If you'll go back, I'll kind of, over. Just with respect to where we're at on the projects. With respect to the Paramount, basically, construction documents are substantially complete. And again, before we go back to bid, we will come to you and basically see, these are construction drawings, you know, what needs to be alternated, what doesn't need to be alternated. We want to make sure we're meeting your objectives with that. Again, with respect to the MAC, construction drawings are basically complete. Again, there's alternatives or alternates with respect to those documents as well. And again, a lot of this will depend upon what we get, kind of a budget, from our architect on moving forward. And again, as I mentioned, the sportsplex, we're in the process. Probably first quarter next year, you know, we'll have to do a lot of public input, and we need to start looking at programming, and as I mentioned before, education. But again, this is a long-term process. We've got seven years to basically sell the bonds. So we've got $25 million set aside on the sportsplex. We do not have to sell those bonds until we are ready. Again, this is also, as we talked about, the utility for the downtown. We mentioned that, that they should be first quarter. And again, so what's next? As I mentioned, Paramount, vacant streets, or should be ready to bid first quarter of next year. Again, we're working on packaging and working with our bond attorney. Peggy's done a fabulous job of working with them, getting everything ready for the LGC, making sure we get our timing on that. But we're looking at moving forward with selling the bonds in April of 2025. That will be for the streets, that will be for the sidewalks, the Paramount, and the MAC. And again, as I mentioned, we have seven years to complete the projects and sell the bonds, so we're not doing it all at one time. As I said, once the streetscape has been completed, and basically we have the project defined, and as well as the sportsplex, we'll sell those bonds. But again, before we do anything with respect to final construction documents, we'll come out to council and make sure we got everything correct.
Questions?
Just, I got one question for Peggy. Obviously, the bonds was the best finance vehicle for some projects that we knew we were going to have to address regardless. And some of that, we've spent some preemptive money on. Do we get, do we have reimbursement resolutions on that? Can we get a list of what that money's going to be? So, yeah, so we can kind of see. Because we paid ahead.
Right.
So that's going to be money that we've spent that we're going to recover because of all the problems and the debt and taxes.
Craig, let me ask you, when you're talking with your people involved with this, especially from the financial side, you know, we're talking about taking the recreation center and it seems like putting it out. Well, that's only going to increase the cost.
It, it, totally agree. It is, the issue that we have to deal with first is really finding the location and really what the programming of the building will be. So that's really, we're going to start that first quarter, starting that process.
To Harold's point, that is an important piece. And I do realize we have time, there's seven years here, but there's a pretty good argument that says we're 12 years behind. So time is of the essence to really get that addressed. We just saw in a housing study that they showed what our population growth was looking for. So it's not, the burden is getting greater, not less. And as we start talking about programming, I do believe it's, I don't know if it's even possible or feasible, but the wise reached out and said, we'd like to collaborate on this to see if there's some synergy that we could capture from, you know, even co-locating if possible, as they're looking to address their needs. So I think we could do that sooner rather than later.
Right, oh, yes.
Start that process, because that's going to help us shape kind of what we're thinking as we start talking to the folks around there.
Yes, sir.
You know, we published an amount of money for that particular, 30 million?
Oh, 40 million.
30 million. If we go out three or four years, you know how much money is going to go up and how much value is going to go down?
Right.
Which you can get, by the way. So I'm just saying that I might be trying to rush anything, but I think the concept of buying a property, which is not easy, the last two big pieces probably we've handled by being fortunate. Frankly. And, you know, I just, what works me is if you go three or four years out, I think we're behind the ball with construction.
Totally per, totally per.
Any other questions? All right, next item, item E, 2025 fees and charges, schedule changes. Got several that are proposed this evening, and I think Peggy's prepared for those.
Thank you, Council. Again, my opportunity to be here with you. You have in your packets and on your table tonight, there was one page of public works that was last year's page to the fifth year's page, and so we put this year's page in front of you. And so this will, if you have any questions, we have all the apartment heads here. We have any changes, increases of these structures or new things. If you have any questions, they are here to help answer your questions.
Once upon a time, we talked about one of the council meetings, a gentleman came and
Once upon a time, we talked about one of the council meetings, a gentleman came forth about, is the police fine for music or loud music? And we said we would talk about it, and we talked about it.
We're working on that now.
Correct. We got, because this gentleman has asked to be involved in reference to the hearing we're going to have or meeting we're going to have, and said we know when this might be.
Yeah, I think it'll be pretty soon. We've got a nearly complete draft that's with legal right now, under review.
Jesus, that would take forever. Jesus, that would take forever. Just kidding, Thomas. Okay, that's a little urgent.
Just kidding.
I just need to give him my heads up so he can be directed. That's it, that's it.
I think the week staff can give his contact information, be sure we're not.
Yeah.
Yeah. Take the burden off of view of that.
There are any questions about the fees?
Yep, absolutely.
What about the entertainment venue at Bar Caliber? Is that done by the way, a contract through the stadium?
Yeah, yes, sir.
It's a double, we have agreements with the.
With the ball, okay.
And then they, they control that right with the.
They do all the scheduling of it, that's it.
Obviously, they're actually being here, so if they have that right, they're not in our fees and charges, but they have a schedule of what they agreed for and so forth. And if we get a part of the person. Okay, do we participate in that at all, you know, when they talk to them?
We do some special events there. Just did our Halloween celebration back in October, fireworks and so forth. We coast parked for some of the events. A lot of the things that they do are some corporate outings for the use of that venue and some connection with their games or other leagues that they have, a few league that uses the stadium quite often in the non-schedule for the ball, some are scheduled, but they handle all that.
So if a citizen wanted to, you know, to use that facility, they would not come to the city, they would go to the.
They would contact the general manager at the ball.
Another question I had, I noticed that some of the, like, you know, it looks like maybe the that-a-way is still on a long summer. But the carousel is going to an hourly rate, is that?
It works out better that way for the carousel event space. We're trying to make as much use of that space as we can. The that-a-ways and other centers and buildings fit into a schedule of like a lunchtime rental and a evening rental, a meals function, fuzzy is what people want. So we do it that way. The carousel event space is for, we've got a lot of meetings and other side of the functions, and so we're trying to make the best use of that facility or rent it more than just the place.
So it just makes sense, you know, to do it on sort of an hourly rate versus a sort of a block. You know, people may not need it at that time, and they could pay the hourly rate and not have to pay.
Yep. One of the big uses of the carousel event space is for children's birthday parties, and that lasts a couple of hours, you know, they get the space, you know, for their birthday celebration, food, whatever. And they also get to a package of being able to ride the rides during that particular thing for a flat fee of charge.
Who else clean up the areas around us?
I'm sorry, Harold.
Who else to clean up at that facility?
Who does clean up? We have staff there that handles that, you know, who, they come and prepare it for the use and then they come back afterwards and prepare it after that, or clean it up after that use for the next week.
So then we have hourly periods of time where they're like two hours.
Yes, sir.
Then you got an hour each week cleanup.
If they rent it in a period where the carousel itself is not operating, what we call all time, they can get it for a longer time if they're going.
Just to follow up, Council, we're also working with soft pockets now, renegotiating the lease there, that it really more encompasses the sports independent venue as well, so.
Okay, what is the term on that lease now? What's?
It's up into the year.
This year?
It's up.
Okay.
So we're working on that now, so that should come to hopefully in January.
Yeah, I mean, I just, and the question, what property? You know, we got this, it's on city property, city facility, and if somebody else wanted, you know, to lease, rent, whatever, it's a nice venue, obviously, you know, and, but they have to go to somebody else and not come up. But anyway, I just throw that out, if you put that in, you're thinking, you're working on it.
That's a very good point. I've had two or three people reach out to me about using it, and we've directed them to Anderson and his staff, and they've been very accommodating, but we just don't know how it goes. The folks is kind of out of the loop a little bit.
We're trying to get a better handle on that. And it was a better way to do it than have our staff, say our special event staff, work with groups to use that facility and soft pockets use it, so that we didn't get double booked, you know, for anything, so that one group could handle it a lot easier than trying to add the two and just soft pockets, so they're all the time and have a lot of their own events, so it just made sense to let them do the rentals and then our staff works with them if we want to use that particular event space and the stadium for any of our events.
Rental fees go where?
Rental fees are collected by the soft pockets, but they pay a percentage in their contract. I can't even remember exactly what it is off the.
Seven and a half.
How much?
Seven and a half.
So they all get, it's 92 and a half and the city gets seven and a half.
Well, they're leasing the facility and then that's the cost share on the entertainment thing.
But the city pays the whole thing, isn't it?
And the, but the soft pockets, they have to maintain it too. They don't, we don't do that for them. They have to keep it clean and, you know, upkeep on it.
Ian, I'm going from memory on this too, but we did have an existing lease agreement with them that we kind of made it a little more difficult. And as that thing is now renegotiated, I would think we should.
We did an addendum when the entertainment venue was open, basically working towards having a more comprehensive agreement with this.
I think it's great to get the consorts with it. To me, it's just the sharing of revenues, but what the city hadn't taken, had, you know, put in the city environment, whatever.
Well, time to renegotiate. That's exactly right. And the utilization of that facility, I think we need to, we need to be sure that we're thinking about what we might see to use in addition to, you know, maybe just their.
And get as much excited as we can. I'm, at this point, we're not using as much as we could have.
Any other questions on these? Is this a question? Sorry. Our next item, item managers, boards and commissioners, the board's at this time will recommend Jamie Lawson. Once again, we have two items.
Good evening. So included in your packet is a summary of the items that the Planning and Zoning Commission had on their agenda on the number of 18. The first item, which was rezoning 24008, this was off of Garden Road, but rear entrance of applicants crossing. The applicant, it was a series of different parcels. The applicant during the meeting removed one of the parcels from the request. And then also, hearing from members of the audience as well as city staff, they requested that the item be continued to December Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended that the applicant hold a neighborhood meeting as well. So that item was not heard or acted upon by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The second item, which was rezoning 24010, was heard by them. I'm going to just stick with this format because for some reason, they're not coming up on the other format. But 24010 is a zoning request that was on Camp Road. The property is about one acre in size. It's on the west side of Camp, just north of Vaughn and just west of North Grand Hope Del Road. The applicant, office of property, is currently zoned to medium density residential. They have a duplex on the property and also have a business, a small business that they wanted to operate. So they have requested to change the zoning to a mixed use with a limited use. And you'll see further in my presentation, the list of requested uses that they have. You'll note on this zoning map that much of the area to the south and east and on the other side of Vaughn are all office and institutional zoning districts. So this is, this is kind of on the, right on the cusp of that kind of change from residential to non-residential.
That whole area in the blue is central office, as it says. That's all residential through there. On the old Camp Road going down beside central office. And you're thinking about, what does she want to do?
I'll show you, I'll show you with the, she wants to change the zoning from medium density residential to a mixed use component, but you'll see that a good variety of the uses that are included in her list are already uses that are allowed currently in the medium density residential. There's only a handful of other uses.
But am I correct in saying that all that's residential from the corner of Vaughn Road to Camp Road?
In, from Vaughn to Camp in this area here on the south side?
No, I'm not worried about that. I'm talking about going down Camp Road.
Yes, a lot of it was residential. Yeah. She's on, her property is on the north side and her.
I see that, but it's all residential. Pretty good.
The Planning and Zoning Commission did vote to recommend approval of this request, as did staff. And you'll see here that the future land use designation for this whole area, despite the fact that the zoning is office institutional, the future land use designation for the majority of this area is traditional residential. This is what I was alluding to before. All of the white text are uses that are currently allowed in the medium density residential zoning district. So she is requesting as part of the rezoning request to add the uses that are shown here in yellow. So 39% of the total mixed use, permitted uses are being requested out of 78. 21 of the uses are already allowed in the medium density residential districts.
And the yellow is what's not allowed currently, right?
That's what'd be added as part of the request.
So they still have a residential piece to it.
Correct. Correct. And, you know, as with some other limited use requests, council can request that some uses be eliminated. The applicant will have to agree to that as well, but you've done that in the past with other limited uses, limited use zoning requests. This just shows the buffering that would be required, that gets increased when you change the zoning from medium density to mixed use. And I think I'll just go back to the first, one of the first slides. So this item is on the work session for tonight. We are asking council to consider a January 7 public hearing date for this item. I know your calendar has yet to be adopted, but that's one of the tentative dates.
Any other questions on this?
That's a quick question. In other words, in the stack, of course, a future development of a property may require technical review committee. So conceivably, some uses would not require and some would, right? Is that?
Yes, some uses, let's say they're just doing an interior renovation. They may not be coming back to the technical review committee for something like that, but a major change of use where there's additional parking that's going to be required or some other considerations would require going to the TRC for approval. If they're adding a garage, let's say that's considered an accessory use, that may not require going to the TRC. But it just depends on the type of change that's occurring. We would obviously meet with the applicant or the property owner during a pre-application conference meeting and get a sense of what they would want to be doing and make a determination based upon the UBO on which direction they would think we need to go.
Now, Jamie, all the yellow is residential, right?
It's residential zoning district. That's the, that's the medium density residential zoning district that's in place right now.
Are you going to question here?
Yeah.
That's all residential houses, homes.
My point, my point is a little rectangle orange piece of property there that then will back up directly to residential property, right?
Mm-hmm.
And what could go there?
Right here?
There and the door. And the, yeah, the next piece on the left, the small right area right there. Who will allow there?
Those are both neighborhood business zoning districts. So also non-residential would be, exists and would be allowed in that area as well.
Neighborhood business, we say small stores or small businesses.
Right, we have a cap on the building size in neighborhood business, which is different than general business. A lot of the same uses are allowed, but just at a smaller scale, smaller, small building scale.
What kind of buffer would be around there? Businesses for the homes already there?
So if you're up against the residential or the yellow area, you would have a requirement in a type C, which is a 30-foot buffer up along those properties. Where you're running the neighborhood business, it would be a 10-foot buffer. And then elsewhere, where you have up against the blue, which is office institutional, it would be a type B buffer, which is a 20-foot. But all along the residential, it would be 30-foot buffer.
But currently, what's in the blue?
Office, office and institutional.
Now, today.
The zoning district or the usage?
What is it today?
There's.
Not the usage, but is it a slayer?
There is a, there is a duplex there. And there is a duplex there.
That's right. Thank you.
Jamie, can you show the list of uses?
Sure.
And this is, the request is for the first meeting?
That is correct.
They'll work well if someone has their office and business in their, in their.
Say the name?
They'll, uh.
Mixed use?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Work well.
Yep, combined together.
Combined together.
Mm-hmm.
Which makes some sense now.
There's a limitation on the business aspect of it, but, um, but yes.
The upper store residential, that means right now that's not allowed, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. But all these that we're asking, I read the question came earlier in Ronnie here, was, is, is, I mean, it depends on the number of businesses available in there. What is the parking going to be like? And how's that going to impact the neighborhood around it, which is primarily residential?
Yeah, my, you know, the lot really isn't that large. In a way, it's configured, does limit, obviously, the type of uses that can occur. Right now, there's a, there's a home on the property, uh, you know, my understanding based on the applicant is that they want to operate a small business on the property. And, and that's pretty much what will be allowed in terms of the square footage, unless there's going to be some other consolidation of lots or additional land. But that would also require going through a rezoning process as well.
And, and items, concerns such as that would be bended through the TRC process anyway?
Sure. And then we'd come back through Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council first, so.
So it's just a request for name public hearing, is that right?
That is correct.
Yeah.
For you to set public candidate.
Let it go to everybody?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item, item G, is the city manager.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Just a couple of days I want to make sure you're aware of. Wednesday, this one is December fourth, seven-thirty to nine AM, is the ACC Public Officials Breakfast, uh, so that everybody is invited to. I want to make sure you're aware of that. Also, we have scheduled our employee Christmas lunch at that ways on December tenth at eleven-thirty AM. And also to make you aware, that first RAB meeting, uh, with respect to the rehabilitation of Western Electric with Department of Defense is this Wednesday, uh, at six PM at the Prose. So we'll have plenty of staff there for that as well. And I did want to remind you, uh, that this coming Friday, uh, the Sunny Ball Memorial will be at, uh, Pine Hill Cemetery at ten AM. Keith, could you want to?
Yes, sir.
Everybody's invited.
I'm sorry, Craig, the RAB program, but the RAB meeting is going to be Wednesday, December fourth, at what time?
Uh, since beginning. Yeah.
And the Sunny Ball Memorial, Saturday, is what you're saying?
Uh, Friday, yes, Friday.
I'll get that.
And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Any, any questions? If not, uh, another's a request for closed session.
There, Mr. Mayor, I have asked if council would vote on the closed session at this time pursuant to NCBS one forty-three dash two eighteen, eleven eighty-three, and so the legal counsel of Gordon, Pennington Claims and Judicial Action, including one direction of Russoff versus Kevin Ogerman, that's out of Michigan Superior Court Case twenty-four CBS four seventy-four. Second case is Chris Corvair versus Harris Moore, Allen's County, uh, Superior Court Case twenty-four CBS oh four six five, uh, excuse me, oh, oh, four six eight five. And regarding, uh, the two issues regarding PFAS litigation, the lead cases in the United States District Court of South Carolina. It's captioned Denver A Accra's Fume Forming Products Liability Litigation. You would recognize that as for the Tyco and BAS, BASF manufacturing. The second reason I would ask before the closed session is for the acquisition of real property pursuant to NCGS one forty-three dash three eleven eighty, ten eighty-four. And that's namely the acquisition of a vacant lot currently owned by LabCorp located facing Spring Street, between the Rock and Maple Avenue and Davis Street. And that's for the, for the public purpose of, like, they don't have pocket car, they operate it all the way. That's for a motion to move on closed session.
So, motion, Council?
Can I make a motion?
We have a motion, we go to the closed session, just for a second.
Sure.
And the motion, setting all the factors simplified by a high, opposed. All you have to do is ask for the.